Item eighteen.
An Act Report, Board of Education Administrator's Salaries.
Oh. Without objection, we link to make a motion and we waive the reading of the report. The board members have copies. The copies are available in the Legislative Systems Office.
Sir.
Listen, wait a second. Does anybody have any objection to... No objection, then we'll move to the actual, uh, motion. At this time, as we're on item eighteen, uh, we move to waive the reading of the report. Now, we'll take a motion on adopting the report and implementing the recommendations. Mr. Cobb.
Your Honor, being found the, uh, ad hoc report from the committee, this time I'd like to make a motion to deny the supplemental appropriation made necessary as a result of proposed expenditures in excess of budget appropriations incurred by the Board of Education for its two thousand and ten, two thousand and eleven school fiscal year due to designated salary increases for non-selected, non-union officials, and further to reserve from distribution to the Board of Education such excess amounts represented by the said proposed increases.
Thank you. Second, if I, Mr. Stanley, discussion related to the issue. Mr. Cobb.
Thank you, Your Honor. I had the opportunity to be on the ad hoc committee for this. And we've given an awful lot of thought to this up until we're on the ad hoc committee. I gotta tell ya, it seems like at every turn, the, the, the school board thing is disappointing. First of all, whoever made this request or the committee who made this request to give raises, that's disappointing. The actions of the Board of Education to grant this, to grant this, these raises, big disappointment. Considering those are city employ, city residents, they should understand the unemployment, underemployment rate in, in Danbury is disturbing. The foreclosure rate is very high and taxes just far off. And it sends a bad message to all the other department heads in the city who have not received raises. Continuing with that disappointment, I mean, like last year, Councilman Sadi kept asking the same question over and over and over. He's getting a little tiring not getting an answer. Councilman Seaberry, this year, asked a specific question about this item and did not receive an answer. I believe they knew the answer. I don't think it was truthful what we, what we received. I asked the mayor about layoffs of teachers, specifically teachers' aides, how many were laid off. I know there were quite a few. Still don't have an answer. Very, very disappointing. I gotta tell ya, and I know that thirty-five thousand, three hundred dollars is not a lot of money, considering the two million dollars that they received as a raise this year. It is a, it is a lot less than a percentage of one hundred and fourteen million that they receive annually. You know, it's our money. It's not the school board's money. It's the city of Danbury, our taxpayers' money. We've got to take a stand on this. I'm, I'm, uh, comfortable with the motion that I made at the ad hoc. I'm very happy with the, with the vote from the ad hoc committee. You know, that thirty-five thousand, three hundred bucks, if they had it, probably could have went to hire one or two or three aides that could have went right into the classroom to help those kids out. Now, I know we've all been in the, um, the conference room of the, uh, Bierbrook, uh, administration building. They got that big banner on there that said, "It's All About the Kids." Well, I don't think it's all about the kids. I think we probably should say it's kind of about the kids. Because otherwise, they would have put, they'd use that money for aides and put them in the classroom. You know, I'm right there in a neighborhood that could drop the banner off to me, I'll change it for you. Not a big deal. You know, and there's, there's some talk about a lawsuit. So what are, what are we gonna do? We're gonna finance a, we're gonna finance the other side to sue us? Very distasteful. Very distasteful. I'll tell ya, I've spoken to an awful lot of my constituents about this, friends and family, and they are very upset over this kind of thing. And I think we're sending a bad message to the, our, all the other chiefs and directors and supervisors and all the other ones that we have in the city of Danbury about raises when they didn't receive the thing. This is wrong. We should stand by the ad hoc, uh, committee report. Thank you for your...
Just, before we get into that, I do wanna make sure that it's a minor thing, I'll get to the second one, uh, related to the actual dollar figure. If you notice, Mr. Cobb's, uh, motions have not included dollar figure. Mr. Longo, depending on which way you calculate the increases, uh, I think the final figure was twenty-five thousand, two, twenty-five thousand, two fifty. All right, and that's just a matter of how you book, whether you call something a raise or whether you call it a benefit. But, and, and, and they've been pretty split with this, but the point, your point's more delicate, Mr. Cobb. Okay, Mr. Seaberry.
Thank you, Your Honor. I was actually somewhat wishfully hoping that today in the public speaking portion, maybe the superintendent or members of the Board of Ed would come before and say that they had worked something out where the cabinet and the superintendent are going to decline these raises, given the economic condition of our state country and the tight economic times of our citizens. Mr. Arcanti's very right. And even before, this was the issue du jour. I was demanding answers from the superintendent, demanding givebacks from, uh, the various teachers and administrators' unions, and even voluntarily foregoing raises going forward. This council, I believe, not unanimously, but overwhelmingly rejected the administrators' contract because of the very reasons that we are now discussing this issue. It's not that people don't deserve the raises. And I've said this to teachers, administrators, coworkers of mine, uh, in, in other businesses, constituents. Many of them deserve raises. Most, if not all, may deserve raises. It's not the issue of whether they deserve it, whether they have many years of education and multiple degrees. It's the ability to pay, whether it's private business, whether it's state government, federal government, there are cutbacks going on, on the pay level. That being said, I'm the last person to support raises for particularly the cabinet and especially the administrators. I'd be the first to do whatever I could to stop these raises. The issue that I have is with the unfortunate constraints we may have on us as a legislative body legally. I've been very public, publicly stated and privately argued with members of the Board of Ed, the superintendent, with others, and we've had significant disagreements, and I disagree with many of the positions they've taken. But there's a rule of law, and so I spoke with Corporation Counsel during the day today, reviewed some cases, and it may take a little bit of time and I beg your indulgence on this a little bit. I need to understand the basis, the legal basis, for being able to do this, because if I recall correctly, in the past, when we've allocated monies based on representations that were made, which unfortunately turned out to be false, and monies were used not for classroom, uh, use like Mr. Arcanti had pointed out, but for other things, the city side has always been held, you know, somewhat, uh, with a gun with no bullets in it, that we couldn't do anything to change this. Once we've made the general allocation when appropriate... Explain to me, uh, the legal basis on which we can do this. Now, that's distinct from other interpretations we've had over the many years many of us have been on this council.
Mr. Pinter has his lock taken out. Mr. Pinter?
Bullets locked, motorized. Folks, the issue here, and I'll frame it very simply, and I would get further from, the issue is this. The question in this case is whether there was an appropriation at all. The legal argument that supports what the council's motion, it's before the council right now, is that there was never an appropriation at all made by this council. Why is that? That's because the council committee, the Education Committee chaired by Councilwoman Stanley, here, Mr. Ring, uh, vetted the information, including the proposed appropriation, asked a very direct question to school officials, which was, "Was your intention with regard to cabinet salary increases?" The response that's ever written minutes, uh, and this was in response to a question by Constance Seaberry, uh, the response was that, uh, that issue will be dealt with at a labor date. From a legal perspective, a reasonable interpretation of that comment is that that is not, that's no longer in the appropriated sums that the council would or could authorize to go to the school board. It turns into a statutory term, a supplemental appropriation. That is a statutory term for funds which exceed the appropriation provided by the Funding Authority, which is, in this case, the City Council, and talents the Board of Finance or Selective or otherwise. Therefore, since the Board of Education did not seek a supplemental appropriation as required, in my opinion, based on facts in this particular case, the motion that President Cobbos so well prepared indicates directly that since there is no supplemental appropriation, uh, you cannot, this body cannot approve this amount of money based on the record and circumstances in this case. So that's the short slash long answer. But even more important, legal quest, legal issue there is, what is this distinction between the Funding Authority and the School Board and who has the clout in certain circumstances? There's a, and I sent Councilman Sadi a few cases. There are, there are legion of cases. It's not that unusual where there's a dispute between the Funding Authority and Boards of Education. A little bit of a difference here is facts in this case. Uh, most of the disputes concern whether appropriation regards educational purposes or appropriation was used for, uh, capital construction or other purposes. That's usually where the fight occurs. There are a number of cases that I reviewed, in addition to ones that I, I sent forward, that indicate that this is not a one-sided game. The appropriations as given to the School Board is not locked and sealed. There are circumstances under which, again, based on circumstances here, I think this applies, there are circumstances in which the Funding Authority can and must exercise its discretion, uh, in cer, in cases where the law has found that the educational purposes served were not as represented, and the educational purposes served reach over into areas more properly in the lack of the Funding Authority. That's one of these cases. So, bottom line is that the appropriation was never, had never occurred in this case. Therefore, we do not get into the situation where funds are provided to the School Board, and as Councilwoman Sadi said, you can never take them back. That's the difference in this case. There should have been a supplemental appropriation, and it was not.
Thank you. With regard to the issue of supplemental appropriation, and I, I can't believe that I'm actually arguing a position somewhat on the side of the Board of Ed on this. This is amazing.
Oh, I can.
It, it's, you know, notwithstanding how much I can't stand this, it, it, it's, it's an issue of court of law for me, and I've gone through the record and I haven't found any request for it, but additional monies. And couldn't we then say that you'd be, uh, precluded from any additional appropriation? If you ask for more money as a Board of Ed in order to fund this, we would deny it. Or if you ask for a hundred thousand dollars to fund something else in the school system that you need, like, fine, you'll get the hundred thousand minus the amount that you've given as a raise to these administrators, because now you're asking for additional funds on top of the general appropriation we gave. Going back to the issue of what the representations were during the committee process, and I do believe there were misrepresentations, honestly, and there has been in the past with other Boards of Education, other superintendents, um, but the cases that you gave me and been reading from them, and one of them, the defendant of the town conceded that all appropriations placed in the plaintiff's Board of Ed's budget may be expended by the plaintiff within its discretion, and that basically if there were abuses of this, that that's up to the electorate to replace those people who abused that trust and authority, and that only when it was a violation of an educational purpose or violation of a specific provision in the city charter, for example, having a divided operating and capital budget, only then could the legislative body potentially step in. Moving appropriations within the existing budget given to them, how, no matter how important it is, and they shouldn't be doing it, if they appropriate from within the dollar amounts they were given by this council, by majority of this council, how is that supplemental? And how is that, how is changing that or disallowing that in their appropriated budget upheld by these cases that you gave me?
Here's how that, here's how, here's my opinion on that. The normal case is just as you described. Okay, appropriation is provided by the Funding Authority, and within that, the Board of Education may properly adjust and use the appropriated funds for purposes that it deems necessary. However, in this case, the appropriation never occurred, and that's the difference. The appropriation could only occur if the recommendation from the Funding Authority went forward with information that would allow it to make an appropriating decision. And here, the record reflects that appropriation for this amount of money was not made. So therefore, you could not take that sum of money and re-designate it into a budget for which no appropriation of that amount was made. That's the essence of the issue here, and it's based on circumstances in this case. Those cases, Tom, and others, there, there, as I said, there are a large number of them, uh, all have, all have facts that are different. The, 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 the elemental rule is, as you've described, that is, that normally, absent facts such as we have here, an appropriation to School Board properly made, and I want to emphasize the last two words, properly made, is within the co, jurisdiction of the Board of Ed in most cases. Now, even there, there are cases, and you'll see them, there are cases and situations where there's been challenges to use of money, re-appropriation of money, re-designation, I should say, of money by the School Board, where it reached beyond what the courts have found would be the normal purposes of ten dash two twenty-two of the statutes. Rather, the courts view ten dash two forty-one as the appropriate section of the statutes which allowed the Funding Authority to override that appropriation. So even in cases where we don't have these facts, there's still an argument that there's not unfettered, unbridled discretion on the Board of School Board.
If I could just really slip in real quickly here, if Dr. Pescarella had said, "Yes, I plan to give the raises," we could not go back and amend the laws.
I agree with that, yes.
Just wanted, just wanted to...
And to continue, going back into these cases and going to what is not allowed, it's Board of Eds are not allowed, unfettered, you know, they couldn't take the money and build a casino on school property. They couldn't go in and hire, you know, uh, clowns to come in and teach classes. Okay. Circus policy. But where, where they're constrained by law, where the cases have found it, is where they violate the statutory provisions of their duty. And that's where the legislative body can come in and take action, where they act outside the scope of their statutory authority, uh, where there aren't divided capital and operating budgets, which was the case in Ellington in this case, you believe me. Now, the cases also go on to talk about re-appropriations within the budget, and that, in this case, it was the Board of Finance, and that the budget as presented to the Board of Finance by the Board of Ed was meant to be, you know, an explanation of what they're going to be using it for, but, and again, I can't find it in these cases, there's not a requirement that those dollars necessarily be appropriated. Once they're appropriated by a legislative body, unfortunately, they're not required to be used for the specific line items for which that representation is made. So if they made it for textbooks, five hundred thousand, then they end up using it for something else. We can't go in and say, "We're taking away that five hundred unless you use it for textbooks." No matter how much I'd like to do that.
That's it?
So, and, and that's where I'm, I'm in the stumbling block, and, you know, the, I don't see it as supplemental, uh, I do see misrepresentations in the process, but I don't see actions outside of statutory authority. And I wish that the Superintendent Board of Ed would resolve this by just saying, "We're not gonna do it," and that would end this, this...
Look, Tom, lawyer to lawyer, the, the issue, the justiciable issue that would go to a court of law for declaratory judgment, whatever means, that somebody challenged this, would basically argue the point of whether this was an appropriation or not in terms of this. And I think that's a winner. I think there's credible arguments here. Okay, and I say a winner, I shouldn't be so, so bold about it. There's a reasonable argument here that a representation to a finer fact that there was no appropriation would be a strong argument, in my opinion, based upon the record in this case. Why is it so important to, to think that? Because the process that we have, and it's been done every single year, as long as I can remember, is that the Funding Authority, this council, establishes committees to examine requests, including requests for appropriation. If that committee does not have information submitted to it or has information that is defective somehow, and therefore makes a decision based on that defective information, it cannot appropriate that fund forward, and that's the issue here. Could have been cured easily by a supplemental request returned to this council, as allowed by law, to provide that additional money as needed for salary increases. To make that request, it's not an issue, it can be debated, turned down, and whatever, but that's the way, under these circumstances, it should have been done.
And let me just say that, I don't know if I know what to anybody, but we did have a very positive meeting Tuesday night with the board, um, and, uh, we, all, all of us are looking forward in terms of some of the things that we need to do for the next budget, and, uh, the board pretty much, I felt, did oppose, but there was consensus that they weren't gonna challenge their actions tonight. Having said that, we also said, we need to go forward and report, we better make a community with kids. Go ahead, sir.
Thank you. I'm still, I probably sell the board. No. Let me read you something. "The monies belonged to the plaintiff's budget, Board of Education. The defendant had no discretionary power to place them elsewhere." This is in the Ellington case, uh, at the end of the opinion. And it underscores, again, going back to the argument here, and, you know, we're gonna come to an impasse, and so we'll just have to end the, the discussion of the issue of supplemental. The presentation of the Board of Ed's budget to the city is to justify its bottom line. And it is for us as a legislative body to go through and say, "Look, it's not justified. We're lowering this, we're lowering that, we're changing this, we're increasing that." Once the appropriation is made, to the extent that they don't come back for more, uh, I, I don't see how the supplemental appropriation argument comes in. I, I'm not discounting the facts, I think everybody stipulates the facts, you know, we don't have a disagreement on what was said and what was not said. It's on, on what a judge may end up, and I certainly hope that if we do pass this, which, and I hope that the Board of Ed and the Superintendent don't file suit, because that would be a more waste of money. I don't think they would. It was unfortunate that the arbit, that the administrators didn't voluntarily give back, but the settlement arbitration cost more money. That being said, I, I'm just not sold on it. So I'm gonna yield the floor at this time. There'll probably be a motion to, uh, to call the questions, so I won't be able to talk again, that's why we're talking, wasting time here. Certainly hope everybody gets their, who needs to vent their concerns. But I, I, I appreciate the cases you gave me, counselor. I've read through, I've read through the cases, and they've cited, I, I just don't see it here. But Board of Ed comes back and asks for more money, darn sure that in any vote that I would take, I might, I would subtract out any extra raises they gave her from that money that they asked us for, and say, "Look, you're gonna find another own budget to replace that. I wanna give you what you need for non-rises in the supplemental." Thank you, Your Honor.
Through the mayor, may I, in response to the...
Sure.
...case, I'd like to read to the council for the very short extract from one of the cases.
Which case?
Um, from the DeBabe case. This is a quote, and it's very important. "Where a town Board of Education includes in the estimates it submits to a Board of Finance," again, this is talented, it's quoted here as the council, "expenditures for a purpose which is not within statutory provisions imposing duty upon it, nor within one which vests it with the discretion to be independently exercised. The Board of Finance," the city council in this case, "if in its judgment, considering not only the educational purpose to be served, but also the financial condition of the town, it finds that the expenditure is not justified, decline to recommend an appropriation forward. To hold otherwise would be tantamount to the giving of a blank check to Boards of Education to spend the money of the municipality without regard to economy, efficiency, or other local needs." That cites actual Board of Ed teachers case. Um, and the DeBabe case, as you know, it's not interesting, not interesting for the folks here tonight, but the DeBabe case has some facts that are different from this and has to deal with capital improvements, but the underpinnings in many of these cases are the same, mainly that it's not a lock, that there aren't any circumstances where the fundamental rule can change, and that exists here with the case.
May I just respond, Your Honor, uh, to the chair. Yes, you read it verbatim. However, the facts are not just somewhat different, they're very different. This was an issue of a cap, a specifically separated capital budget for Board of Ed and an operating budget, and then appropriations within the capital budget for specific capital items as set forth in the city's charter. It's a very different situation, and in fact, the plaintiffs in that case, uh, I'm sorry, the town was trying to rely on other cases and say that, "You can't come in because it's our operating budget." Say, "No, these are two separate areas. One is capital improvement, one is operating. In this case, we're dealing, in our case, we're dealing with an operating budget."
Fair enough, but the, but the Fowler case from nineteen forty-eight specifically is the, is the main underpinning for the premise that I just read to you, which is, notwithstanding the different facts, you have circumstances where, where you have a problem with appropriation, and the, and the powers of these two different groups are at odds.
So how many people's eyes have blazed over? I, I'll, I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Mr. Seaberry. Thank you, Your Honor. I think this would ask, this question would not go through Les, but actually to you. On the city side of our budget this time, what raises were your department has given?
Why are you gonna ask that question? They have not received a raise, and I believe it's been almost two years.
I'm sorry.
Nineteen months or so. Three years. Get out of here, Leo, you got one three years ago. And they do a great job. It's been twenty-four months.
Twenty-four months. Okay, so, so our people that are running the city were not blessed with the raises, but after the fact, the cabinet...
Due to the financial condition, by the way, the city.
Thanks, sir. You're in the standing.
I hope I can articulate this the best that I can, but I did sit down with the Board of Education, I held several meetings when we went over the budget, and the reason, and I did talk with Les before we had the ad hoc concerning these cabinet raises. To make it very simply, we allocated monies to the Board of Education with what they presented to us with what they needed. And what Les, I think, is talking about is it's something that happened outside, that information was not given to us. If that information was given to us, maybe the amount of money that we appropriated originally would be left. We had, we had that opportunity then. We did not know about these cabinet increases. And that's basically, um, I got my information through Corporation Counsel, and that's where our ad hoc ended up. And I thank you for your time.
Mr. Seaberry, and I, I know Mr. Nero wants to talk, I'm gonna get to him, folks. We, uh, have had this discussion with the board. The board has, has said that, again, not a vote, but there's consensus that they're not interested in, in litigating this. But, you know, I'm gonna tell you something. Sometimes, sometimes an issue comes up where you ought to litigate it. Sometimes we have to make a stand about what's right for the taxpayers of this city.
That's right.
And this is one of those times. And I, I respect Mr. Sadi, he's a good friend. He's brought up some interesting points. I respect Mr. Pinter a little bit better, but I like Mr. Sadi.
Appreciate.
So having said that, uh, I believe that at some future date, if there's a much larger appropriation at stake, more than twenty-four thousand dollars, which frankly doesn't make it worthwhile for anybody to, to litigate, then maybe we oughta go to court and litigate that. Maybe that's our duty and responsibility here. Mr. Nero.
Absolutely. Thank you, Your Honor. And this, this is... Thank you. This is, uh, to Mr. Pinter. It seems to me that there were two events. One was at the, uh, Board of Education, um, meeting that, um, Councilwoman Stanley chaired, where the comment came back and they said, "We'll deal with that later." I don't know if those were the exact words, but it had to do with what, how are the, um, what's the cabinet raises, kind of thing, and I think the comment was, "We'll deal with that." Is that correct?
That, that'll later date, of course.
That'll later date, okay. So, you know, I know with legality, these words are, are very tricky when they come up, but, you know, nothing to worry about. So my, my first thought is that first took this money for any money such as this flock of paper that's gone. If they said those words, then this is now off the table. Then the second event, if they wanted this, they had to come back with a structural request. Is that correct?
The two, two were together, yes. They were off the table, and it, it would have to be returned as a supplemental request.
Okay, so to me, it comes back to two events, and neither of those events were withstanding where this money could then be taken.
Yes, it, Councilman Nero, in a way, the city council, the Funding Authority was, and I don't mean unfair to the Board of Ed, I served on Board of Ed where I lived for ten years, so I understand how they, how it operates and the restrictions they have, but the, the Funding Authority has to have the information to make a decision. And if, and I'm not saying things were at disclosure intention or anything like that, I'm just saying that the information was provided to your, this body that this appropriation would or would not include something, and that statement was made, and the record reflects that, and that's why that appropriation did not include this amount of money.
Okay, and then the subsequent discussion from that between you... Okay, and then the subsequent discussion from that between you and Councilman Sadi has to do, had to do with cases where supplemental monies were used or applied for. Is that correct?
There are some of those, yes.
But the case that you read from showed that that money had to be used in a certain way in order for that to be allowed. Am I correct in that? It was shown that it wasn't being used.
The cases, some of the cases that were referenced are cases which indicate the dividing line between the authority for appropriation between the school board and the authority that a Funding Authority has, the council's case. Those are, a lot of those cases show who's got the jurisdictions.
Okay, and so from that, you can take the next step to say that we have, we're on solid ground, so to speak, to be able to do this.
Yes.
That's what I wanted to get, but it's basically two events, I think, in my mind.
That's fair enough, yes.
Thank you, Your Honor.
Mr. Seaberry. Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move the question, please.
The question is seconded by Mr. Pinter. Okay, the motion with the question is not debatable. I was in favor of moving the question and voting on this, signified by saying aye.
Aye.
And the opposition?
Nay.
Just raise your hands in the negative. It'll be six in the negative. Mr. Sadi, Mr. Visconti, Mr. Nero, Mr. Perkins, Mr. Shinisi, and Mr. Rortek. Now, down to the main motion. I was in favor of adopting the report of the ad hoc committee. As, and motion presented by Mr. Cobos, signified by saying aye.
Aye.
And the opposition?
Nay.
Okay, it'll be Mr. Sadi, Mr. Perkins, and Mr. Shinisi, and the negative.